Este evento es muy bueno. Realmente disfruto de todas las libros que veo. Mucha variedad. Tienes poesía, tienes a los autores, libros para niños y es un gran evento para la familia. Me gustaría, espero, conocer a algunos de los autores y recibir firmas de libros también.
Estoy aquí para completar esta pieza en particular hoy porque conocí a Nipsey y a su hermano y soy de la zona. Realmente me tocó suficiente para darle tributo.
Fue un camino derramado durante años, pero ahora un parqueo en la calle de Fenton y Charter School en Lakeview Terrace está a punto de obtener una transformación necesaria y los miembros de la comunidad no podrían estar más felices.
Hoy estamos llevando a cabo una transformación aquí en el puente de Fenton y Tarabella donde finalmente estamos entregando un parqueo al lado de una de nuestras escuelas de gramática más prestigiosas en la zona. Algo que ha estado buscando por más de 25 años.
Lo que hará este proyecto es ampliar tanto Tarabella como Fenton por 20 pies a cada lado. Agregarán un parqueo de 13 pies ancho. Así será mucho diferente y mucho mejor para los motoristas, para los pedestrians principalmente, para los estudiantes que vengan aquí a la escuela secundaria.
Esperamos que la construcción comience en unas semanas y, espero, pronto después tendremos a un montón de niños corriendo en algún parqueo. Es un día importante para la comunidad y después de todos estos años, sabes, fuimos aquí y llegué aquí trabajando con el Bureau de Ingeniería. Estamos haciendo lo correcto.
¿Crees que tienes que usar dos veces un baño público en un parque local? La mayoría de nosotros lo hacemos, incluyéndome yo. Pero los funcionarios de la ciudad esperan que se deshagan de esa experiencia al debutar en la primera toiletia de limpieza de la ciudad.
Tres, dos, uno.
Este tipo de bañera automáticamente se limpia por sí misma después de que este se ponga a usar 30 veces.
Esta es la primera de estas en toda la ciudad de Los Ángeles.
Por favor, presione el botón para abrir y cerrar la puerta.
Tenemos 660,000 visitas a nuestros parques a la semana. Piensa en la carga que tiene los empleados de mantenimiento de este departamento para mantener 1,600 bañeros que están siendo usados constantemente.
Tenemos que ver la innovación, tenemos que ver la tecnología para encontrar soluciones.
Lo que pasa aquí es que después de cada 30 usos se pone una agente sanitaria sobre el suelo y el área de la toiletia. Esa agente sanitaria se queda por un minuto y luego los tuberos de agua se encienden y eso va a lavar la agente sanitaria. Y luego después del ciclo de lavado, los secadores se encienden y empujan todo ese agua a una draina de traje en el frente de la unidad. Así que después de este ciclo de 10 minutos tenemos una cubica de limpieza recién limpiada de nuevo que smell great y está lista para usar.
Un sistema automatizado como este realiza una gran reducción de costos en mantenimiento. Es un baño más limpio, más agradable a usar que una facilidad de baño convencional.
Y también juega música.
Gracias mucho.
Es un gran placer.
15 años que jugamos tenis aquí y no tenemos un musical, solo bañera.
Gracias.
Eso es muy amable de usted.
Esta es una ciudad que ha sido conocida a través de su historia moderna como un lugar de innovación y creatividad y haciendo lo siguiente. Y esto puede ser un paso en esa dirección también.
Fue divertido para toda la familia durante una fiesta de baile y noche de películas en el Pool Park Pool, patrocinado por la alcaldesa Gil Stadia.
Estamos teniendo una noche de película de familia hoy. Esta es la primera vez que la organizamos aquí en esta instalación. Así que estoy muy emocionada de que la comunidad esté aquí y podamos conocerlos. Es un evento gratuito hoy. Es genial para todos venir. Está muy caliente afuera. Así que es bueno que ellos vengan y floten en el agua, vean la película y disfruten.
crecí haciendo esto. Lo estoy haciendo. Tengo 77 años y todavía lo estoy haciendo. Me encanta. Ayuda a los niños a crecer. El nadar es bueno para el cerebro, el cuerpo y la alma.
Ven, tráete tu chaqueta, tráete tu toalla. Afirme nuestro programa.
Encontrá tu lugar de escena favorita durante una caza de cazadores. Disfruta de un yoga en la playa y sienta el belleza de la danza coreana tradicional. Todo esto y mucho más en "Estas cosas para hacer".
En tus marcas, haz, pon, vamos. Es una caza de cazadores con tema de película en el centro de la ciudad. Vais a ver dónde aparecen algunas escenas de películas como "Speed", "Wedding Crashers", "Pretty Woman", "Ghostbusters" y "Beverly Hills Cop", entre otras cosas, fueron filmadas. La caza de cazadores también incluye la exploración de artefactos extraños, algunos sitios extraños y figuras, un mensaje criptico y una parada en el vibrantísimo centro comercial. Este evento se lleva lugar el 7 de septiembre y comienza en Pershing Square, 532 South Olive Street. El evento empieza a las 2 p.m. y continúa hasta las 4:30. Para más información y para RSVP, llama al 1-877-9-GO-HUNT. Lleva tu matas de yoga y la toalla de playa y ven y disfruta de un día en la playa con Thick Girl Yoga LA. El día está lleno de yoga, juegos y regalos. Además, ejercicios de respiración, conciencia corporal y un bolsillo de alivio. El evento se llevará lugar el 7 de septiembre de las 12 de la noche a las 6 p.m. en Doc Wyler Beach, ubicado en 13173 West Pacific Promenade en Playa Vista. Para ver exactamente dónde está, asegúrate de seguir la fiesta de baile de Thick Girl Yoga LA en Facebook. La compañía de música y danza clásica coreana te invita a que vengas a ver sus danzas de corte y sociales integrales a la cultura coreana. El ensamble presenta formas de danza ricas, graciosas y elegantes. La presentación también incluye segmentos educativos con danzar de danza coreana. La danza se organizará por parte de la central branch de la biblioteca pública de Los Ángeles a las 6:30 en West Fifth Street el 8 de septiembre de 2 a 3 p.m. Para más información, visita Eventbrite. El Club de Películas Secretos estará de nuevo el sábado 8 de septiembre. Se anulará la screening de Mothra vs Godzilla como parte de su serie de Kaiju de verano. Lleva a toda la familia al histórico Vista Theater en 4473 Sunset Drive en Las Feliz. Siedate con snacks y algunos bebidas para lo que seguro será una noche de brujos. La screening se lleva lugar el 8 de septiembre. Para tickets o más información, visita Eventbrite. La ciudad de Los Ángeles y la alcaldesa Nuri Martinez invitan cordialmente a todos los angelinos a esta celebración de El Grito. Este festival de artes y música gratis será el evento de inicio en la reconocida Navidad del Heritage Latino. Buscillos, disco silencioso, fiesta de danza DJ y más. No te olvides de El Grito, que se lleva lugar el 15 de septiembre a las 5 p.m. Para más información, contacta la oficina de la alcaldesa Nuri Martinez en 213-473-7006. Y eso es un mirar a algunas cosas para hacer.
Eso es todo para esta edición. Soy Ummama Rashid. De todos nosotros aquí en LA esta semana, gracias por acompañarnos.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Please take a seat. Please, everyone, take a seat. Welcome to City Hall to this Los Angeles City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, September 4th. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscayino, Sodio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Bloomingfield moves. Bonin seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Krikorian moves. Lee seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there is a request to continue. Item number five to September 18, 2019, sir.
Okay, so ordered. Continue.
Item number one is item notice for public hearing. For item one A, the department recommends reducing the lien to $4,750.72, and there are cards on both items.
Okay, continue.
Items two through four, items which public hearings have been held. The committee report for number four has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration. And also, there's a request to hold item three on the desk, sir.
Okay, let's do that and vote on the remain— Mr. Buscayino, four.
Hold out a four. Four, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
We're already holding that one. Okay, let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, continue.
Items six through eleven are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk, sir?
I will defer to Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items six through eleven have all been considered and approved by the Budget and Finance Committee. Items seven through ten involve routine settlements. Items six and item eleven involve instructions from the city attorney's office, and Budget and Finance recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations as to all matters.
Thank you, sir.
Those can be considered in open session unless members have questions or—
Let's—Madam Clerk, prepare to vote on those items.
Item number six is an item—is a case entitled Nicholas Henderson versus City of Los Angeles. There is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement. Item number seven is—in the case entitled Yolanda Beleza Pace versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $200,000 in settlement. Item number eight, in the case entitled Joseph Garbutt versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $300,000 in settlement. Item number nine, in the case entitled Alejandra Zaragoza versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $1.7 million in settlement. Item number ten, in the case entitled Q Sangro versus Etol versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $149,000 in settlement. And item eleven, in the case entitled Fix the City Incorporated versus City of Los Angeles, Etol, there is a recommendation to expend $210,779,000—I mean, two hundred—excuse me—$210,779.97 in settlement plus accrued interest, sir.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there's a request for item six and eleven to go forthwith, sir.
So ordered.
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or public comment, sir.
Okay, so let's start with public comment. Corey Schmidt, please come forward. You have item one and then your general public comment. And Mr. Previn, I think, is next. Good morning.
Morning, you guys. Corey Schmidt, for the record. I am here to speak on item number one B in regards to 88th Street, and I just wanted to say that that street is very near and dear to my heart. And I was going to speak on Temple Street as well, but I think that item's been closed for today. I just was going to say that I—while on these streets, I—let's say I had a—let's call it a premonition—that there would be an unstoppable evil that would be so deeply seeded or deeply rooted that it wouldn't be able to be stopped. So—it's one of the reasons why I'm so adamant about the things that I speak about.
Why don't we give him—why don't we let you speak on your general public comment since that's off-topic? So go ahead, Mr. Schmidt.
So now that we're back to my general public comment, I want to speak on items—well, two got removed, so we'll go three and four. Basically, I gave you guys plenty of opportunities. I gave you a chance, you see? And now I gotta do what I gotta do, you see? So—I just want to say that these fires—you know, the—I—I believe that it's the cell technology that I keep talking about, you see? And we're going to try to put it on the homeless, you see? But I don't think it's right, you see? So I think that money for the homeless belongs to me, you see? So I—because I think that I'm going to be taking care of these streets, cleaning them up. And I think that I—I'm the one that needs to be taken care of it, you see? So that's about it.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Previn, item one and your general public comment. So—you get one minute on item one and one minute on general public comment.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City. And today at item one, I guess you've got a couple of vaca—uh, not vacations, you know, where you're gonna—nuisance abatement, and obviously, you're going after your constituents in both CD seven. Ms. Rodriguez is going to take a $5,700 lien against one of her constituents. And then over in nine, Kern Price is going to do just a little baby one at $2,000. And these are—you know, tempering down. We're not seeing as many of these as we have in the past, and that's interesting. I'm not sure why that is. I know that in—in our neighborhood, we have experienced a lot of, you know, improvements, but also overexpansions. We're seeing things where little property has big thing on it, and it makes it hard for us to live our lifestyle. Now, we're seeing it not only on individual properties throughout Studio City, but also at our park. There's a plan to McMansionize lovely Rec Center Beeman Park, which has really got people upset, and nobody wants to talk about it.
Okay, let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
Okay, fine. I'll talk about it in my—in my general public comment. I think that, you know, Studio City is under siege. We have three big, large lots. I'm heartbroken to tell you that the Sportsman's Lodge, where—I don't know which one of you has been there for some event in the past, but many—the trees are coming down, the building's coming down, and we're going to get a bunch of high-end retail that nobody wants. And Ben Besley, who's a whole part of the team who works closely—by the way, I want to say thanks to Aaron Green and Paul Corretts for having a little meeting right through this entire meeting so far. And also, to all the folks who understand that development is the only way. I think Gil Sodio was down here kissing Samantha Millman's ring. We're very proud of her. She's going to be a part of the city family for a very long time. And Brian, her husband, all of you guys are working together. But the question is, is it going to get the public, you know, kind of a feeling that we're really being protected? Or are we just going to get the Harvard-Westlake plan over at Weddington Golf and Tennis? That hopefully, Councilmember Krikorian on September 10th is going to explain how we're not going to get that horrible plan. And he'll tell the Studio City Residents Association, I assume. We never find out anything over at the Neighborhood Council, but—I've stepped away from that because I know, sir, that you're going to be elected—
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Sax, Arnold Sax. You have item one and your general public comment, Mr. Sax.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. For the record, Arnold Sax. Item one refers to—a what? A rape case—or a rape case, depending on how you want to pronounce it. I'm surprised—you know, ever since the city unions have lost their control over their retirement funds, the city has gone off the rails. I think if you used MICLA funds instead of requiring people to pay a lien, and you use MICLA funds to remodel or reinvest into middle-class housing, you'd create more jobs. And MICLA funds are guaranteed by the city. I don't know, Herb, you were in housing. Didn't you really know about MICLA funds when you were the housing—
We seem to have moved away from the liens, Mr. Sax.
I am talking about a chance to take the people out of the lien by using city funds so that they can rebuild the house and make it more of a—more—the city more middle-class friendly.
Give him his one minute for general—
Oh, my one minute of opening—yes, it was quite—this is quite a show here in Hollywood. Hollywood and Los Angeles. You think they're the same, but they're actually different. I read the opening credits where it said something about speech content. Who decides on speech content, Mr. City Attorney? I know we have free speech, but speech content refers to hate speech, maybe. Who decides on that? If you have hate speech in city council chambers, what do you expect outside of city council chambers? If you allow people to say nasty commentary and curse and use the N-word and make derogatory remarks in city council chambers, that's content. That has nothing to do with free speech. That's content. Isn't that protected by some city or—don't we have laws about content and hate speech? Shouldn't somebody be reinforcing them? Herb, this is your house. Don't you think you ought to enforce them?
Let's get Ms. Richardson and Marco Juarez. Public comment. You have one minute each. Whoever comes up first. Come on, Marco.
Good morning, sir. My name is Marco Juarez, and again, I'm here—I—I'd like to—the record to reflect my share. It states my opinion, that is important on record. And also, that's the government request, section 5495054963. And run out, and again, I'm trying to find out who can help disabled tenants, allowing income families to stop all city inspectors and investigators' corruption, and especially the bullying from these agencies. Orasman intimidation retaliation, that was before by the management company. Now, they've been doing by criminal investigators, working for Los Angeles—Los Angeles Housing Department, Investment Community Department. Our recall file complaint with the chief investigator, Robert Galardi, and also the director, Anna Ortega. Nobody's been able to contact me and to do something to stop all the bullying for this criminal agency. Who help us? We're disabled, and we need help. So, please do something. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Some people don't know how to get married. They don't realize that in order to be married, you have to have a marriage license application from the City Hall. It costs $100. Some people don't know that. Then you need to take that—fill out that marriage application, go to a preacher or justice of the peace, have them say the vows over you, finish filling out that paper, and take it back to whoever you got it from. Then, and only then, are you considered legally married. Once that paper is at the hands of the person you got it from for properly filled out between one to 10 days. Some people also don't know that it's not legal to have more than one wife. In the state of California, only one life—wife or one husband is allowed at one time. So I'll repeat that. In order to be legally married, you need a license from city clerk, filled out properly within one to 10 days, return it.
Thank you. All right, this ends public comment. Let's vote on item one.
One B, sir.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
I'd like to recognize Ms. Rodriguez now on item three.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, Mr. Bloomingfield, I want to thank you for your introduction on this motion, and more importantly, for being such a great collaborator and helping to achieve what we are going to be doing today. Colleagues, item number three is regarding amending the Los Angeles municipal code related to unauthorized presence in restricted areas of high fire hazard severity zones. With wildfires being our new normal and an imminent threat to not just many of our hillside communities, but many communities throughout the San Fernando Valley, and as someone whose district has endured back-to-back wildfires, which in several cases resulted in the mass evacuation of nearly half of my council district, it is important that we are looking at more thoughtful changes to our municipal code that will help to provide more efficacy when it comes to evacuating many of these areas. Currently, the fire code requires that signage is posted every 600 feet. And with the change in this municipal code, this will allow our police personnel to be able to provide personal notice to individuals that are encamped in these restricted areas. This change is going to enable us to not just have a far greater effective notice and removal of these high fire hazard severity zones, but what it does—and what I want to thank Mr. Bloomingfield for, and the city attorney, and the mayor's office, Unified Homeless Response Center, was there has been a collective effort to assure that while we're not just making an amendment to this municipal code, what we are doing is providing all of the wraparound services that are going to assure that when we evacuate these areas, that we are doing far greater diligence in connecting these individuals that are being removed to the services that will hopefully get them connected to greater housing opportunities and the resources that they need to permanently be off of the street. And so with that, colleagues, I want to—I want to thank everybody for their collective efforts to making this common sense change to our municipal code and our fire code to provide us the kinds of responses that we need, but more importantly, the collaborative effort that has enabled us to provide all of these resources in that when we do engage in these—in these outreach efforts during these high fire seasons, that we are not just evacuating these areas, but connecting these individuals to greater resources. And I ask for your eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield.
Great, thank you. First, I want to start—I want to thank Councilwoman Rodriguez for—not only for seconding this motion, the moment I introduced it back in January, but for really ushering it through the committee. I know that you've—you've dealt with fire even more drastically than in my district, and your district was literally on fire not that long ago. I just want to give a little history of how this—this came about. And, you know, this—after the Wolseley Fire, which was a big impact on on my district, right on the edges, and we dealt with all the evacuees, I participated in a number of after-action reports, both in my own office, with the county, meeting with a variety of folks. And this idea came from the city attorney's office. I want to thank them. Because one of the things that all of these after-action reports noticed—mentioned is that we have a lot of fire liabilities, particularly in the high fire severity zones. And there was a city attorney who picked up on the idea that we have a notice problem. It's already—it's not—you're not allowed to be in the high fire severity zones, period. But under our code, you need to post a notice every 600 feet in order to—to get someone out, even during a fire situation. And that obviously doesn't make any sense at all. And if we were to put up signs every 600 feet, we would be destroying the environment of these ecologically sensitive areas. So the idea is fairly simple, which is to allow for verbal notice. So that when someone—when someone is in an area that they—they are not allowed to be under our current laws, an appropriate official can can give verbal notice, and that will serve the same function as the sign. And I also want to thank the mayor's office has put together a very smart way to go about implementing this. Instead of just doing it—you know, people are concerned it's going to just—all of a sudden, people are going to be looking around the the areas to to pull people out for no reason. They've put together sort of three tiers. On a regular day, when there's no fire concerns, they just do the regular proactive outreach. On a day—on a red flag day, which is a tier two, that's more active of an outreach. That's giving people notice and saying, hey, you've got to go. This is a red flag day. And then on tier three, when we actually have a fire in the area, it's evacuation. It's—you're coming with me. We're getting out. We're getting to safety. And making sure that the authority that's there does not need to be burdened by the sign notices. It's a common sense approach, and really, it's about—it's about fire safety, and it's about public safety, caring about the safety of the people who are unsheltered and the people who are sheltered. Because all of our safety is inextricably linked when it comes to fires. So with that, I ask for your eye vote.
Mr. Bonin.
Thanks, Mr. President.
You'd create more jobs. And MICLA funds are guaranteed by the city. I don't know, Herb, you were in housing. Didn't you really know about MICLA funds when you were the housing?
We seem to have moved away from the liens, Mr. Sack.
I am talking about a chance to take the people out of the lien by using city funds so that they can rebuild the house and make it more of a... more, the city more middle-class friendly. Oh, my one-minute of opening. Yes, it was quite... This is quite a show here in Hollywood. Hollywood and Los Angeles. You think they're the same, but they're actually different. I read the opening credits where it said something about speech content. Who decides on speech content, Mr. City Attorney? I know we have free speech, but speech content refers to hate speech, maybe. Who decides on that? If you have hate speech in city council chambers, what do you expect outside of city council chambers? If you allow people to say nasty commentary and curse and use the N-word and make derogatory remarks in city council chambers, that's content. That has nothing to do with free speech. That's content. Isn't that protected by some city or... Don't we have laws about content and hate speech? Shouldn't somebody be reinforcing them? Herb, this is your house. Don't you think you ought to enforce them?
Let's get Ms. Richardson and Marco Juarez. Public comment, you have one minute each. Whoever comes up first. Come on, Marco.
Good morning, sir. My name is Marco Juarez, and again, I'm here. I'd like to... The record to reflect my share, states my opinion, that is important on record. And also, that's the government call, section 54950, 54963. And run out, and again, I'm trying to find out who can help disabled tenants, allowing families to stop all city inspectors and investigators' corruption. And especially the bullying from these agencies. Orasman intimidation retaliation, that was before by the management company. Now, they've been doing by criminal investigators working for Los Angeles Housing Department, Investment Community Department. Our recall file complaint with the chief investigator, Robert Gallardi, and also the director, Anna Ortega. Nobody's been able to contact me and to do something to stop all the bullying for this criminal agency. Who help us? We're disabled, and we need help. So, please do something. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Some people don't know how to get married. They don't realize that in order to be married, you have to have a marriage license application from the City Hall. It costs $100. Some people don't know that. Then you need to take that... Fill out that marriage application, go to a preacher or justice of the peace, have him say the vows over you, finish filling out that paper, and take it back to whoever you got it from. Then, and only then, are you considered legally married. Once that paper is at the hands of the person you got it from, for properly filled out between one and 10 days. Some people also don't know that it's not legal to have more than one wife. In the state of California, only one wife or one husband is allowed at one time. So I'll repeat that. In order to be legally married, you need a license from city clerk, filled out properly, within one to 10 days, return it.
Thank you. All right, this ends public comment. Let's vote on item one.
One B, sir.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
I'd like to recognize Ms. Rodriguez now on item three.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. Mr. Blumenfield, I want to thank you for your introduction on this motion, and more importantly, for being such a great collaborator and helping to achieve what we are going to be doing today. Colleagues, item number three is regarding amending the Los Angeles municipal code related to unauthorized presence in restricted areas of high fire hazard severity zones. With wildfires being our new normal and an imminent threat to not just many of our hillside communities, but many communities throughout the San Fernando Valley, and as someone whose district has endured back-to-back wildfires, which in several cases resulted in the mass evacuation of nearly half of my council district, it is important that we are looking at more thoughtful changes to our municipal code that will help to provide more efficacy when it comes to evacuating many of these areas. Currently, the fire code requires that signage is posted every 600 feet. And with the change in this municipal code, this will allow our police personnel to be able to provide personal notice to individuals that are encamped in these restricted areas. This change is going to enable us to not just have a far greater effective notice and removal of these high fire hazard severity zones, but what it does, and what I want to thank Mr. Blumenfield for, and the city attorney, and the mayor's office, Unified Homeless Response Center, was there has been a collective effort to assure that while we're not just making an amendment to this municipal code, what we are doing is providing all of the wraparound services that are going to assure that when we evacuate these areas, that we are doing far greater diligence in connecting these individuals that are being removed to the services that will hopefully get them connected to greater housing opportunities and the resources that they need to permanently be off of the street. And so with that, colleagues, I want to thank everybody for their collective efforts to making this common sense change to our municipal code and our fire code to provide us the kinds of responses that we need, but more importantly, the collaborative effort that has enabled us to provide all of these resources in that when we do engage in these outreach efforts during these high fire seasons, that we are not just evacuating these areas, but connecting these individuals to greater resources. And I ask for your eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield.
Great, thank you. First, I want to start, I want to thank Councilwoman Rodriguez for, not only for seconding this motion the moment I introduced it back in January, but for really ushering it through the committee. I know that you've dealt with fire even more drastically than in my district, and your district was literally on fire not that long ago. I just want to give a little history of how this came about. And, you know, this, after the Woolsey Fire, which was a big impact on my district, right on the edges, and we dealt with all the evacuees, I participated in a number of after-action reports, both in my own office, with the county, meeting with a variety of folks. And this idea came from the city attorney's office. I want to thank them because one of the things that all of these after-action reports noticed, mentioned is that we have a lot of fire liabilities, particularly in the high fire severity zones. And there was a city attorney who picked up on the idea that we have a notice problem. It's already, it's not, you're not allowed to be in the high fire severity zones, period. But under our code, you need to post a notice every 600 feet in order to get someone out, even during a fire situation. And that obviously doesn't make any sense at all. And if we were to put up signs every 600 feet, we would be destroying the environment of these ecologically sensitive areas. So the idea is fairly simple, which is to allow for verbal notice, so that when someone is in an area that they are not allowed to be under our current laws, an appropriate official can give verbal notice, and that will serve the same function as the sign. And I also want to thank the mayor's office has put together a very smart way to go about implementing this. Instead of just doing it, you know, people are concerned it's going to just, all of a sudden, people are going to be looking around the areas to pull people out for no reason. They've put together sort of three tiers. On a regular day when there's no fire concerns, they just do the regular proactive outreach. On a day, on a red flag day, which is a tier two, that's more active of an outreach. That's giving people notice and saying, hey, you've got to go. This is a red flag day. And then on tier three, when we actually have a fire in the area, it's evacuation. It's, you're coming with me, we're getting out, we're getting to safety. And making sure that the authority that's there does not need to be burdened by the sign notices. It's a common sense approach, and really, it's about, it's about fire safety, and it's about public safety, caring about the safety of the people who are unsheltered and the people who are sheltered. Because all of our safety is inextricably linked when it comes to fires. So with that, I ask for your eye vote.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Blumenfield and Ms. Rodriguez for this. You know, like many of the people around this horseshoe, I represent a lot of areas that are high fire severity zones with one way in and one way out, very narrow roads that have had a lot of fire scares. Mr. Coretz and I have been out at fires together, as has Mr. Rue in my area. And before I took office, I flew with LAFD above the city and looked at the whole city and all the risks. And when we landed, I asked Mario Rueda, who took me on the tour, what keeps you up at night? And he said, Councilman Bonin, the northern part of your district. And since then, it has kept me up at night. So I am glad to see us doing this. I wanted to punctuate, though, for a second, and sort of think of some of the context of this, because a couple of years ago, I believe, we started posting no smoking signs in the hills and in the canyons. And we have not done a particularly good job enforcing that. So as the action plan and the financing for this comes to budget and finance, I want to see what we can do to actually enforce the no smoking rules up there as well, because it is dry up there, and it is a tinderbox, and there are very few ways in and out. We did an emergency drill up in Mandeville about a couple of months ago, and some very bad stuff we learned, is that notify LA was pretty much a failure that day. People did not get notified, and that needs to get fixed in a city on the verge of an earthquake and with the risk of fires. And we also need to, and Mr. Coretz and Mr. Rue and I are working on an urban wildlands interface task force, we need to start looking at what the building and development standards are in high fire severity zones. Not only should people not be camping there, but we can't keep building there, because the risk of fire is only going to get greater. And as we talk about this, I just want to note that we adjourned in memory the other day of someone who was set a fire, who was homeless. And Daily News and City News Service has a story today about two 25-year-olds who were arrested, being held on a million-dollar bail for setting a fire, trying to kill people in a homeless encampment, apparently, setting a fire that burned for two days, 45 acres near the Glendale Freeway. And I want to make sure as we do this to protect housed and unhoused, that we also remember that there are people who are homeless who are not just starting a fire, but are also being victimized by them. Thank you.
Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first want to thank Ms. Rodriguez and Mr. Blumenfield for bringing this really common sense, no-brainer step forward that we should all enthusiastically embrace. But I feel like I need to say that this is not a homelessness ordinance, and I'm sure that's the way it's going to be reported. I'm sure it's going to be reported as an effort to clear homeless people out of high fire areas, and it's not. It's an effort to move people out who are violating the law. Being homeless does not give you license to violate the law. People who are trespassing in unauthorized areas and endangering people's public safety and increasing a fire risk need to be dealt with appropriately, whether they are housed or unhoused. So I hope that this story will not be about, you know, that this is some sort of an attack on homeless people. It is not. There are many constraints that we have on enforcing what many people would consider to be common sense, quality-of-life issues that surround homelessness, many court restraints and other constitutional limitations that we have. This is not one of those, because this does not involve anything that's fundamental to the state of being human. The state of being human does not allow you to go and trespass on other people's property or trespass in areas that are unauthorized for entry or endanger people's lives by creating a fire risk. So let's think of this as it is, a public safety issue, not a homelessness issue. We, you know, we sometimes feel like our hands are tied in dealing with many of the issues that we have to deal with. And there are many complicated, difficult things that we're going to have to deal with surrounding the 30 or so thousand homeless people who live in Los Angeles. But this is about protecting the lives of the other 3.9 million people who live in Los Angeles from being destroyed by horrendous wildfires that have affected so many of our districts and so many other communities throughout Southern California. So I call for your eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian, and you are correct. Government has a lot of responsibilities, none of which is more important than us keeping people safe. That's our number-one gig. So with that said, Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Mr. Buscaino.
Great. We're going to take up item four.
I thought you wanted... Item four? Yeah?
Yes, sir. If you can. Gene Soroka, our port directors here, colleagues, to report on item four. We heard in our Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee yesterday how the tariffs are going to be impacting our port operations and the supply chain and goods movement. I'd like to ask Mr. Soroka to join us at the table. He has a short presentation for us, colleagues, that has been also passed out. You have a hard copy of the presentation before you. If you can, Mr. Soroka, just share with us briefly on what we heard in our committee yesterday, and we actually, we took Mr. Soroka's lead on this. This is such an important issue that's impacted our entire region to the point where he wanted to come brief this entire body. So, Mr. Soroka, Gene, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Buscaino. And good morning, Mr. President, council members, members of the public, distinguished guests, and city staff. My name is Gene Soroka. I am the executive director at the Port of Los Angeles. What brings us here today for this update began with the last presidential election and the Trump administration declaring that China was supporting and enabling unfair trade practices, including but not limited to currency manipulation, forced technology transfer, and intellectual property resolutions that were not appropriate in the business arena. As that debate began to circle the world, we stated pretty quickly that we would support anything that would promote the competitiveness of American companies and the jobs that we so sorely wanted to put into great position here in the United States. But we warned of three things that could be possible outcomes of this ill-advised trade debate. One is that there would be consumer impact mainly in rising prices, and to date, after 17 months of this trade debate, that has become true. Secondly, companies in the United States who will bear all costs of these tariffs as importers of record, with payments of tariff taxation going directly to the United States Department of Treasury, would absorb costs. If they would absorb costs at this rapid pace that could impact hiring and expenditures on capital and business investment, and we see that that is true today as well. We also said, thirdly, that there would be an impact to shifting trade patterns, that if China was to be lessened in their global impact on world trade, that other countries would be looked at for sourcing of materials and finished goods. Unfortunately, here for us, about half of the cargo that we import are parts and components that go into the U.S. manufacturing stream, and that is exactly the type of industry that this administration was trying to build up, and that has not done, that has not gone well. The world who observes us at the Port of Los Angeles wondered, how would Los Angeles respond to this? And I would say, with the great confidence and support of Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti, the Board of Harbor Commissioners, and this Los Angeles City Council, we have responded with purpose. For the third consecutive fiscal year, we have set the all-time record for cargo movement at the Port of Los Angeles for our 112-year history, and we are poised to set for a fourth consecutive calendar year another all-time record that would place us at the highest cargo volume for a port in the Western Hemisphere of the world. But that is not without concern. For the first time in my memory in this industry, we are facing a 360-degree trade negotiation. We still have not finalized agreements with the U.S., Mexico, and Canada. That has not been approached by Congress yet. Talks with the European Union have been put on ice for almost a year and a month at this point in time, and what is in the media most days is our ongoing debate with China. If we look under the hood at what this great year represented for the Port of Los Angeles, you'll see that for every container we gain from new locations in Southeast and South Asia, we lose two and a half containers from China. In addition, because of retaliatory tariffs and other policies, the American exporter has been harmed irreparably. Three major industries, to be specific, are agricultural sector, are recyclables, and heavy machinery, including automobiles. The chart in front of you shows the dissipation of cargo based on these policies and where we're trying to make things up. Unfortunately, it's going to take seven Vietnams to make up for the loss of cargo in China due to these policies. And the simple fact is that American companies doing business in China today earn more in revenue from their operations in the mainland than we spend on American exports to China as a whole. There are still other levers that could be pulled here in this ongoing tariff war that could make economic peril more concerning to all of us. We have to be very nimble in what we're trying to do. The outsized responsibility we have to help support in our way, one in nine jobs in Southern California, meaning a million people go to work every day with jobs related to our port, and the fact that the cargo that moves through our facilities reaches each and every one of our nation's 435 congressional districts means that this is a conversation of national significance. But with our deep understanding of world trade and the supply chain and our strong relationships, we have been able to garner support from emerging markets and countries that do want to do business with us here in Los Angeles. To complement that need of the 20 million folks here that go to the store like you and me every day buying goods, and the fact that our challenge to be competitive, which is the number-one topic we face today in our industry, to challenge us for the cargo that moves to the interior of the United States is at play once again for the port and city of Los Angeles. Overall, our strategy has been very succinct, focused on new customer acquisition, making our port easy to do business with, and a digitization strategy and plan that has developed a partnership with General Electric Transportation that has built and delivered the first-ever port community system in the United States called the Port Optimizer. I believe that one of the more important reasons that we've been able to keep ahead of this rapid-paced change is that we've been able, through technology and digitization, to see around corners and longer distances, to better prepare our workforce and our supply chain partners for what's coming our way and handle it better. The difficulty is the stress that this policy has placed on our workers and our companies will also be difficult to recover from in the future. We have simply seen more exports in a choppy fashion trying to come into the United States ahead of new tariff milestones and a lessening of exports, widening the trade gap, which is counter to what this policy was originally designed to do. That puts financial and operational stress on the port as well as its partners from the private sector that must be rectified quickly. We have called for a negotiated settlement, one that actively addresses the needs of the supply chain while understanding, as former U.S. Trade Representative and Secretary of Commerce Mickey Cantor, who is a resident of metropolitan Los Angeles, states, "Rules-based trade are most important, and there are other remedies to follow through to make sure that we're all on an even playing field, and we enhance the competitiveness of our city, our port, and our nation." And Councilman, with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Gene. Clearly, we're blessed to have you leading our port. America's port director before you, colleagues, he's got the skill set, the knowledge, and the ability to lead in these tough times. And when we talk about tariffs, clearly, as you heard from Gene, these tariffs clearly will have significant impacts on our local, regional, and national economies. And what I see here is more so of a war on egos, not a trade war. These egos between these two international leaders are clearly going to impact our economies. And when our port takes a hit, our local economy and our regional economy take a hit. One in nine jobs can be impacted in this region, one in 50 jobs throughout this country. So we also have to remind ourselves, during these trade talks and the trade war, we, as a port, we are truly the gateway to the Pacific Rim, and a loss of trade equates to a loss of jobs in our region. And not too long ago, this chamber was packed with longshoremen who really move our containers day in and day out. And they have made significant contributions, along with our partners at the port terminal operators. Also, keep in mind what Gene told us yesterday, for every container we gain from other countries, we lose two and a half containers from China during this trade war. And it is a trade war, and it's something that we are suffering from, and we cannot move, continue to move unless we have the ability to have both countries come together. In addition, and Mr. Sidil reminds me of the agreements, the trade agreements on the North American countries as well, Canada, United States, and Mexico. Where are we that legislatively in Congress? Is it sitting on somebody's desk?
Yes, it is.
And this is, you know, here at the local level, we have to remind our federal partners that if anyone's going to take a hit, it's going to be us on the ground here. So we encourage Congress to move on that trade agreement between the United States, Canada, and Mexico as well. So thank you, Mr. Soroka. I don't know if you have any questions, Mr. President, or not. We're good.
No. Very good presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, wait, Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Buscaino, for bringing Mr. Soroka before us to engage in this conversation. And we are blessed in Los Angeles to have a port director who is one of the leading national experts on international trade and how it affects shipping in our port system and commerce throughout our country. So it's, we're really blessed to have you on the job and to have you here to engage in this conversation. I think the point that needs to be underlined here is what you said almost in passing, that there's a million people in Southern California whose job depends on the success of this port complex and the trade that comes through it. A million people. And that's jobs directly relating to shipping, transportation, trucking, the logistics, all of that. But in addition to that, we have, do we not, one of the leading manufacturing centers in all of the United States of America here in Southern California, do we not?
That's right. In Los Angeles County, we employ approximately 390,000 workers in the manufacturing sector, the largest county in the United States.
So when certain people want to beat up on United States manufacturing and talk about manufacturing being dead because they want to stand for a photo op in front of a shuttered factory in Ohio, maybe they need to look at the manufacturing sector here in Southern California, which is robust, which employs, you know, many, many people, and which is largely dependent, is it not, on international trade?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So if we have, if tariffs are imposed, if we engage in a trade war with our Asian trading partners, not only does the port suffer, but the small manufacturers in Ms. Rodriguez's district and Ms. Martinez's district and in my district and in many of our other districts that are manufacturing, you know, doing high-end manufacturing for parts that'll be assembled someplace else, for example, those companies are going to be hurt, and those jobs are going to be lost right here in Los Angeles. Isn't that right?
That is my belief as well.
Okay. So what would you recommend that the council do and that the people of Los Angeles do to take this discussion to an action item?
I made the comment to the committee yesterday in front of council members, Bonin and Buscaino. During the last administration, we in the city of Los Angeles and even in our city departments had great relationships with the administration in Washington. That is very, very different today. We need to start knocking on doors together, amplifying this message from your level, from other elected positions' levels, so we can get action at this point in time. Simply stated, our voices fall in death.
Good. Mr. President, if I may, just one other area tangentially related, and relates to a discussion that we had in Ms. Martinez's committee yesterday. A few years ago, I believe I'm correct, that our leading, the leading export from the Port of Los Angeles was recyclables. Is that right? So...
That's correct.
So plastics, paper, scrap metals, not manufactured items, but our trash, essentially. We were shipping out of the Port of Los Angeles mostly to China. What has happened over the last few years with regard to that? What's, how has that changed?
On that note, we mirrored the transportation of the recyclables nationwide. So we were not ahead of the curve or behind, we were following national trending. What has happened is that prior to the announcement of this tariff debate, which has escalated to the point we see it today, China put into place its green fence policy. And while the idea was very strong and supported by most in the international community, its intention was to clean up those recycled materials that were going over. So if you said you were shipping wastepaper, there was to be nothing else in that shipment other than wastepaper, no mixture of the other commodities that you just outlined. That has forced our recyclables community to find better ways to get into middle markets, such as recycled paper pulp. So we are see industries burgeoning and current members of industry widening their scope of what services and products they could afford. There will be a positive that comes out of this, but the difficulty is that transition, and coupled with the retaliatory tariffs, we're seeing the industry suffer in this interim period of time.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gene. Good job. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, we are...
There's the matter of 1A.
Let's prepare to vote on that.
Mr. President.
Oh, Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you. On item 1A, I'd like to recommend that we waive the balance and receive and file, please.
Yeah, I'll second that. So we need to vote on it, or can we just?
Yes, sir.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Buscagino?
Mr. President, if I may, colleagues, I'd like to introduce you and welcome, I think for the first time, the L.A. County, L.A. City Chambers, former Councilmember of the City of Denver, who I have profound love and respect for our relationship with National League of City, former Councilmember of the Honorable Albus Brooks, who is here and California native. So welcome, Albus. Appreciate you, Al. We love you and hope you have, enjoy your stay here in Los Angeles. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. You know, Councilman, welcome. Why don't you say a few words? Well, why don't we put you on the spot?
Yeah.
See if you still got it.
So, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmembers. It's good to be back home in my hometown of Los Angeles. I have been on Denver City Council for eight years, and now I'm in the private sector and working in development and construction with Melander White. And we actually are working in Los Angeles. So we're excited to work to create inclusive cities here in your community, and thank you for your service.
Good to meet you and welcome home.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred. Announcements, announcements, members? Mr. Kukorian, do you have an announcement?
Not at the moment, but let me, let me think if I do.
In fact, members, I'm... We have one last bit of business I'm trying to... Mr. Rue? Mr. Rue?
Actually, let me think about it.
Where, Mr. Kukorian, where is Tom LeBonds when you need him?
President, he's over on Hollywood Boulevard for Jackie Wilson's Walk of Fame celebration, filling in for Mr. O'Farrell with Barry Gordy and the other great Motown stars who were there today. By the way, Mr. President, you still may have time to get over there if...
Mr. Rue?
Mr. President, you up the ante. So I would like to announce the 29th Annual Sherman Oaks Street Fair that will take place on Sunday, October 20th of 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It's an amazing event. We close off the entire street. We, every restaurant in the area participates. We have beer gardens. We actually have a new addition this year where we will be having a mini Comic-Con, where we'll have anime and a section for both young, young children and young at heart adults who want to participate in the anime section of the street fair, which is a much anticipated and added attraction to the 29th-year-standing Sherman Oaks Street Fair.
That's wonderful, Mr. Rue. Mr. Bloomingfield?
All right. As long as we're all mentioning events that are coming up, I want to tell you about a good one coming up this Saturday, September 7th at 6 o'clock. Bring your friends, your family. It's Hero Night in the San Fernando Valley. What we're, we're having an event with our first responders. It's, it's a combination event. First, from 6 to 8, I do regular sidewalk office hours, and I'm going to set up a booth and meet with constituents. But if that's not enough of a draw for you, which I understand sometimes people want a little bit more, we've called it a Hero Night, and we're having first responders there. We're going to have police, we're going to have fire, we're going to have a variety of folks who are first responders in earthquakes, who are part of the city family, and they're going to be there to meet with people. A big fire truck as well for the kids to play on. And then, also, we're going to have food. It's a big event where the Fire Department is, or UFLAC, I should say, is bringing out their, what they call the mother of all barbecue.
The Moab, yes.
Grill, the Mo, yes. And they're, they're bringing it out, and they're going to be burgers and hot dogs, which I'm providing for free for the community who wants to come and enjoy. And then, if that's not enough for you, when the, when the, when the sun goes down at 8 o'clock p.m., we're going to have an outdoor screening of The Incredibles, and it's free for all, for the community to come and see and to see the, now that you've seen the real-life heroes during the light, you get to see The Incredibles when it gets dark.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. That sounds very exciting. Ms. Martinez?
President, I was just reminded that it's Beyonce's birthday today, so I'd like to wish her a happy birthday on behalf of this L.A. City Council. But I also wanted to remind the public that we're going to be celebrating El Grito on September 15th with Los Tigres del Norte here at the steps of City Hall. Everyone's welcome. We're going to have a lot of fun, a lot of food, and there will be great entertainment. So the colleagues that make up the Latino Caucus on the City Council will all be there to ring the bell and celebrate El Grito here in the city of L.A.
Wonderful. Mr. Kukorian?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. And while Beyonce's birthday is very important, certainly to this city, I'm reminded that today is, in fact, the birthday of the city of Los Angeles. And September 4th, 1781, was the day in which the Spanish government formed the Pueblo of Los Angeles. We talked a little while earlier about the anniversary of the Portola Expedition arriving in Los Angeles, and then a few, a decade or so later, the municipal corporation was formed, or I shouldn't say that, the Pueblo was formed in 1781 on this very day with the arrival of the 44 pobladores who walked from the Mission San Gabriel here, people of mixed ethnic background, to come here and create the foundation of the city that we all have the honor of being able to serve now. So that started on this very day in 1781.
Wonderful. Mr. Corretts?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to announce that I introduced a motion today, a resolution in support of a bill by my favorite state legislator, Scott Weiner. And I just discovered this bill, otherwise I would have done this some time ago, but it changes Caltrans's planning process so that it would take into account all complete streets elements, including pedestrians and bicyclists, which they currently rarely do. So I think it's an important measure, and hopefully we will help it get through its last challenges and get signed by the governor.
Well, I know we are trying to stretch things out a little bit here, Mr. Corretts, but for you to fall on the sword and to support your favorite legislator, I think that sells, says volumes about you. Anyway, with that said, I think we're good. So hopefully there are no more announcements. Let us rise for adjourning motions. Looking to my left side, Mr. Bonin's side, I don't see any to my left. Looking to my right, Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I wish to rise today in honor of Reverend Dr. Gwen Guebord. Reverend Dr. Gwen Guebord, founder and president emerita of the Guebord Center, created the center after nearly two decades of working shoulder to shoulder with leaders of many faiths and traditions to explore the, explore the experience and presence of the holy. From 2003 to 2009, Dr. Guebord served Bishop J. John Bruno as officer of the economical and interreligious concerns for the Episcopal Diocese of Los Angeles. During part of this time, Dr. Guebord also served as a consultant for interreligious relations for the Episcopal Church. She served as the president of the Interreligious Council of Southern California, the California Council of Churches, the National Board of Interfaith Alliance, and Progressive Christians uniting. Dr. Guebord initiated interreligious dialogues with the Buddhist, Hindu, Muslim, and Sikh communities in Southern California. She also served as vice chair of the National Muslim-Christian Initiative Dialogue, representative to the Christian-Jewish Dialogue for the Episcopal, Episcopal Church, partner and co-convener of the Buddhist-Christian and the Hindu-Christian Dialogue, and co-founder and co-convener of the Christian-Muslim Consultative Group of Southern California. Dr. Guebord was a recipient of the Muslim Peace Award from the Islamic Center of Southern California, the Mahatma Gandhi Award for the Advancement of Religious Pearlism, Pearlism from the Hindu-American Foundation, the Annual World Interfaith Leader Award from the National Association of Inner Church and Interfaith Families, the Distinguished Alumni, Alumni Award from the Claremont School of Theology, and an Interfaith Unity Award from the South Coast Interfaith Council. In June, in late June 2019, Dr. Guebord received word that her cancer had spread and reached a decision to stop further treatment. Stepping down from the presidency of the Guebord Center, Dr. Guebord recommended her choice of Dr. Louis M. Sproug to succeed her and carry on the mission of the Guebord Center. On August 15th, 2019, Dr. Guebord lost her 10-year battle with cancer. She is survived by her wife and partner of 40 years, who has joined, who joined us today, Dr. Louis M. Sproug, her mother, Donnis, her sister, Catherine, her niece, Rachel, her grandnephews, Andre and Jordan, her brother-in-law, William, and nephews, Eric and Joel. In lieu of flowers, donations can be made to the Guebord Center. May she rest in peace, and thank you, colleagues.
Are there any other adjourning motions on my right?
And thereby reducing air pollution and protecting public health as well as reducing the greenhouse gas emissions is way overdue. It is no lie that air pollution poses a significant danger to the public health of all Angelenos. I know all well, I know all too well of what the effects of air pollution can cause. I myself have been affected by it, being diagnosed with an irregular heartbeat, not knowing about it until the sixth grade. This shouldn't be a new normal for students like me, who didn't even know about a condition I had, I hadn't had before, or even for my friends to find out they have asthma. We must all understand that it is the smallest things that could cause the largest problems. Leaving your car on while waiting for someone, or even leaving the car to pick up something, might seem like nothing, but it is, and it is affecting the lives of all my community members. Once we understand that, we can fix all the problems in the world. What Councilmember Corretts has proposed is nothing...